Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town of Carlisle Board of Selectmen and COVID update or informational session of April 28th, 2020. And I would like to invite anybody who has any questions or comments about, well, actually, we'll ask for community input first tonight. And if you know how to raise your hand, you can do that. Or if you know how to use the chat function, please do that. Otherwise, you can email me at kweat@carlislemass.gov. And I will get your email and make sure your question gets forwarded to whomever needs to answer it tonight. Is there anybody raising their hand? To be recognized for community input. Tim, do you see anybody that I'm not seeing?
I don't see any hands raised, no.
Okay, well, then, in that case, we'll have another couple of minutes after the LEPC presentation. We'll ask for people if they have questions again. And I would like to start off with Chief Fisher for the Local Emergency Planning Committee update.
Thanks, Kate. So I think from our standpoint, and I think you'll probably give Fire and Board of Health their own time to talk. But I feel like the LEPC has been prepared and has kind of stayed ahead of the curve for things that have occurred in Carlisle. I think Lori Eckler and Angela have done a really nice job taking care of folks in Carlisle that have any kind of either movement limitations or need services of any kind. From a protective gear standpoint, our emergency people, Chief Soros has done a great job working regionally to get what we need. We're starting to get the first of our orders that we ordered from commercial vendors at the police department this week. Pretty happy about that. The only thing it's back order right now is some extra large gloves and some smaller things. But I think for the most part, our town is in good shape for where we are. I think that this is the first week we're only going to meet twice this week, the LEPC. Normally, we've met Monday, Wednesday, Friday. This week, we're only going Monday and Wednesday. Next week, everyone anticipates members of the LEPC coming to the Board of Selectmen with their elevator speech. We gave them to each other last week. So an elevator speech for short, medium, and long-term plans for the different pieces of the local emergency plan. So we look forward to that next week and stand ready to answer anybody's questions. But that's all I have for now, Kate. Thank you very much for that opportunity.
Thank you. Chief Soros? I'm trying to...
There we go. I'm off mute now.
Thank you.
Yeah, so as Chief Fisher was saying, our PPE is getting better. It was very nice. The Keen family donated a bunch of KN95 masks, which was helpful, quite helpful. One of the things we're finding in terms of our ordering is that the schools, having decided, you know, as the schools are no longer going to be in session this fall, a lot of the orders are getting freed up that would have otherwise gone, that they had ordered. So places that said they weren't going to deliver for two months are now saying, well, maybe we can do something better than that. Our final person who was in self-isolation is now back. So we're now at full staff, back to full strength. So for us, actually, the stay-at-home order really helps our availability. We've had probably better availability this month than we've had for a long time. But we're here, we're ready to serve. We're back at full strength at this point.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to start with COA. Where did it's...
Hi, Kate.
Thank you. There's Angela.
Oh, the COA is still doing our Shine or Medicare appointments. We're still delivering medical equipment. We're still doing Meals on Wheels. We canceled our podiatry clinic for May 4th and 5th today. But we've worked with the doctor who does that for us. And people can go to her office in either Bedford or Sudbury if they have a big knee to see her. And we're doing our Bits and Bytes, which is a weekly email about what's coming. Most of our programs that we are doing are online. We do have all of our exercise classes online and some of our coffees that we're doing without coffee, but with chat. And we are doing our weekly or bi-weekly news on things that might be helpful as well as fun things. We're adding some links to things that we hope people will enjoy seeing. We delivered masks today to people at Benfield and Village Court. A lot of the people in town are making masks for us. And so the rest went to Lori. And her team will deliver them as people request them. And all a senior has to do is call the COA and leave us their name and number and address. And we will get that to Lori and she'll get somebody to deliver it. And that's about it for now.
Thank you very much, Angela. And since you brought Lori up a couple of times, I'm going to go off to Lori Eckler for her report. Thank you. Lori, you're muted. Hang on, Tim, so probably has to...
We should be able to...
So let's see. We are up to, we've added a few seniors to our list of people that we're providing support to. And so we're up to, what did I count? Fifteen, I think fifteen seniors, citizens. And we're supporting three families in addition to those seniors. And I spoke with Angela this afternoon. And we're also going to add yard work to the list of services we offer. We have a number of young, high school, college-age students who've signed up to be volunteers. So that is something that they are very capable and interested in doing. So we're going to add that to seniors' services we're offering. And yeah, that's it. We're probably on our, in some cases, our third or fourth round of shopping for some of the seniors. And things are going really well. And I think we're doing a good job keeping the citizens at home, safe at home.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lori. Linda Fantasia from Board of Health, and you're muted, so... There you go.
Um, so I'm sure everyone's interested. Our current case count is seven confirmed, one probable. We take a probable as a confirmed. We treat it the same. We only have two active that are still in isolation. So that means out of the eight, six have recovered. So that's good. And people should realize that we started doing this back mid-March when we got our first notice for our quarantine. So that's eight cases since mid-March. So it just says that Carlisle residents are taking it seriously, the social distancing and doing the things they need to do. There is one new thing that the state has initiated that I want to make residents aware of. Now, if you are a contact or you've been exposed to someone who tested positive for COVID, you're classified as a contact. And we need to follow up on those contacts because if someone has been exposed, they do need to go into quarantine for 14 days. And the sooner we can get them into quarantine, that means they won't be spreading it to other people. So as of this week, what the state started, they contracted with a health group. So they're actually contracting out the contact monitoring call. And if you are identified as a contact, one of these coordinators will call you. And they will probably text you ahead of time to set up a good time to call. The caller ID will be MA COVID team. They will not ask for any health insurance information or social security information. Anything, information that you give to them will not be shared except with the health officials. So they won't release your name or who they've called. And so we're hoping, I'm going to put this on the website and we'll get it publicized. So if by chance you get a call from the Mass COVID team, please, please answer it because it is important. And that's really the way we're going to get a handle on putting a lid on COVID. And final thing is probably, and Chief Fisher talked about it briefly, what we're trying to put into place to get back to regular business. And I know one of the key things for the Board of Health is being asked is what about summer programs and camps? I was on a DPH call today. There were 495 people on the call. And I would say the main question from cities and towns was what about camps? And what about summer programs? And we do not have a guidance yet. The Department of Public Health is still waiting. They want to check their data. They want to make sure they're making the right decision on when and if these programs can move forward. So everyone's trying and we will get all the information out to families as soon as we possibly can. If anyone has any questions, please don't hesitate to email the Board of Health or leave a message for our office and we will get back to you. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Linda. Christine, I don't see Tim O'Shea, so I'm going to call on you for schools.
Sure. So as we know, last week, we were on vacation. It was much needed for both families who were helping their kids and faculty. They started up again. We're in what Jim's calling Phase Three, which means that we know we're not going back till the end of the year and all the implications that are happening with that. They are working on lots of projects on the building. Soon going to be packing up the, at least the eighth grader stuff so they can get those rooms cleaned out and get the stuff back to families. So it's, we don't know, as Linda was saying, about the summer yet, about summer school. So all that is where in process, but not really digging our teeth into it because we don't know what we're going to need to do. So everything is good.
Thank you very much, Christine. And of course, as everybody knows, the governor did come out and extended social distancing until May 18th. So, Tim, did you want to mention some things about planning around opening Town Hall? And if that impacts some of the planning?
Sure, sure. Actually, there are two subgroups of LEPC will be meeting this week. One, we'll be working with the town clerk. Two, on the elections process, setting up a town caucus for May 18th that more than likely would be held outdoors and the planning and logistics surrounding that. And there's a second group that's going to be meeting to determine what we need to know and have in place before we reopen Town Hall, even in a limited way. What kind of protective equipment do we need for staff? Do we need for visitors? What sorts of transactions can be done more easily than others? We still feel that public meetings won't be happening for quite a while in the Town Hall. But certainly, other functions can come back slowly. We need to discuss scheduling with employees and, you know, literally down to, you know, who sits next to who and what hours or days of the week will they be in versus another person? And try to observe that social distancing. At least at this point, we, you know, we hope that as we go forward, you know, things will kind of relax a little bit, but we'll be very cautious and mindful of, you know, the governor's continued stay-at-home order and trying to bring things back, but, you know, slowly and in a prudent manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? I think we're all set with LEPC. Was there anybody who wanted to ask a question around what has just been reported? If you could use your chat function, if you're on the phone and can't use chat, if it's at all possible for you to email us any questions? Okay, so here's somebody who wants to know if there's any plan to do COVID testing in town. That looks like a Linda Fantasia question to me.
So that was discussed on our call today. And you've probably heard that Somerville is doing testing. Cambridge probably is looking into it also. And the state is doing testing for certain towns. But the position of the state of Department of Public Health right now is they're not sure how useful it would be, what it would actually tell us, how this would help us resolve where we are, what's coming, and how to deal with it. So everyone is aware of it. And it's still very much on the state's headlines that they're looking into. But there's no recommendations for towns or communities to start doing it right now.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Any other community input for anybody who might have entered a little later? Because sometimes you're like in a queue and it takes you a little time to get in. I'm not seeing... Yes?
Hi, this is Barney. I did want to ask, maybe it's a question for Chief Fisher, but I know that the LEPC had discussed a recommendation about the Town of Carlisle. Right now, we've said, you know, we're closed, Town Hall is closed through May 4th. Is there a suggestion of what we do here in town about continuing to be closed?
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Sure. So the recommendation from LEPC was to bump up Carlisle to June 1st. But that's more for event-type things that are currently also restricted. That's really not about planning for our town. In other words, the caucus, potentially increasing services available in Town Hall. But that's more for guidance for folks. I don't know, for lack of a better word, graduation party, people were thinking about having, you know, large events, holly stuff with recreation, some of the things that, I know Angela was planning with the seniors. I think the LEPC was providing direction. And I believe that we were asking the Selectmen to consider making that official tonight, if I understand the logistics of it. But thanks for bringing that up, Barney. But I think that's what the LEPC is asking for at this time. So we can be clear in our direction to our residents that we're working on town functions, yet we're still going to ask them to social distance and not gather in groups prior to June 1st.
Is that your understanding? That's okay with Barney?
Oh, yep. Yep, I just wanted to make sure we covered that before we moved on.
Yeah. Great. Anything else for the update? Okay, I think we can start the Selectmen discussion of the LEPC, the various LEPC recommendations to us that they would like to have, you know, either blessed or, you know, some direction on and our discussion on extending the May 4th closure, sorry, the extending the May 1st tax. I see that we have that as a separate one.
Yeah.
Okay. And then there was, there's a last thing was an expedited, I'm trying to work off of memory a lot of it, an expedited appointment to the police department. And we have to discuss whether we want to do that tonight or if you feel that we, if the board feels that we have to wait until next week to get it posted. Partly, you know, my feeling is we're meeting weekly in order to stay nimble around the COVID situation and things pop up at various times. They're not as disciplined as they used to be. And so that's why, you know, I'm wondering if we could discuss that under the update information and discussion part. And maybe the police chief would like to explain to us why he feels this should be expedited.
So the only direction I have is that we did go through the hiring process. And normally, as you know, I would, the Selectmen in Carlisle, the appointing authority for police officers, and this police office should be moving from a part-time role to a full-time role to fill a retirement vacancy from an officer that retired a month and a half ago. So we did a posting, we did interviews. I'll call out Christine Lehrer because she's on this call. She was the citizen rep on the interview committee. And we interviewed six people and chosen Michael Foto as our candidate to move from part-time status to full-time status. And next week, we have, you know, I think our COVID-specific Selectmen's meeting, we're kind of hoping to be able to report on movement from each department, short-term and long-term goals, as well as be able to report on the caucus and the Town Hall things Tim referred to. So I forwarded our official letter that I always forward a Selectman for consideration for the hire. And if you take it up tonight, that's great. If folks feel like they'd rather push it off to next week, we can do that, too. We no longer have anyone either in quarantine or out for COVID-related illness. So knock wood, we're doing okay right now.
So, John, is this, this is Nathan. Is this, you know, one of the things that we had asked, you know, you, Brian, and Gary to do is to kind of come up what might be needed to get through the rest of COVID? This sounds like this is totally separate from that.
It is, Nathan. I've got actually a separate request that's almost finished to meet with you. Should be part of our report next week, but there's probably a few things that are in the weeds that I should, I would like to talk to the Selectmen with. But I know I referred to your direction that you provided me and provided us. I referred to that yesterday during the LEPC meeting, that you'd ask for those things specifically. And I do have that almost ready for consideration. And not to bring too many things forward at the same time, but, you know, part of what you're asking for was what that financial impact is going to be. And then, of course, the direction came for the Department's meeting today. We need to also provide a budget with a 5% cut. So, you know, I've got kind of three things going on simultaneously, almost there with each of them. So I know that you requested this of us. And it's almost there. Took some meeting with some members. I need to get some folks on board with a few of the pieces of the plan. So I'm sorry to be a little nebulous, but it's, we're almost there. But yes, this hire was a hire that, of course, you folks approved us to do. And there's actually just filling in for a person that retired. So this is kind of regular business as opposed to what's been given to us during this tragic time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thanks. And so, but were you saying that, you know, obviously, your preference would be to be able to do it tonight, but it's not that big a deal if we postponed it until next Tuesday?
Correct. If you do it tonight, we'll meet with Anish, we'll figure the benefits piece out, and we'll put them on the schedule, frankly. If it's not till next week, we'll do it then.
Kate? So as I understand it, there is a single recommendation coming from the vetting committee that interviewed the candidates in the testing. Nothing will change between now and next week, as far as I know. And so I don't, I don't know what we would gain other than perhaps a little bit of protocol in putting it off for another week. The same candidate will be put for us next week. There's been a very thorough process. So I guess I would recommend we do it tonight and get it behind us.
Thank you. Anybody else like to weigh in? Barney and Luke?
Yeah, I mean, since it's the replacement, you know, I mean, we might as well. Yeah, we knew it was coming, so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do it.
I guess I just worry that it wasn't on the agenda. And, you know, I don't know if, you know, the vetting process wasn't public. I just worry that we're going to get ourselves into trouble by doing too many things that aren't on the agenda.
Yeah, and while I, you know, I'm completely supportive of filling the position, I think it's important to follow our general approach just to give townspeople a week to think about some, know that something's coming and feel like we've been transparent about it. And so I would, given the chief's feeling that, you know, waiting a week is not a big deal, that I would suggest we just wait and put it on the agenda for next Tuesday.
Okay. Tim, would you put this first thing on the agenda for Tuesday, please?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you. Good. So let's move on. Just lost my screen. Oh, here we go. To the discussion of extending May 4th closure date to June 1st. Does anybody have a problem with that or some comments on the board?
Is there, I may have missed it at the very beginning. Is there any guidance from the state as to whether they're not, whether or not they're going to be moving from May 4th? Or did they move from May 4th today? I was kind of just...
Okay. Yes, you missed that. They moved from May 4th to May 18th. But the LEPC took that information in and said, we would certainly take May 18th for some activities, you know, but that we would like to extend to June 1st for some others. And maybe Chief can go back and circle back and just explain that one more time, if you wouldn't mind.
You caught me answering an email. I caught the tail end of that. You want me to talk about why the difference between May 18th and June 1st?
Yes.
So the difference is, the difference between how we've been doing things in Carlisle and why we're staying ahead of the curve. And I think, I was talking to somebody today about why a month is helpful for planning as opposed to the way the governor is doing. And different governors have chosen different time periods. And, you know, Governor Baker's chosen May 18th. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful of that date, but I'm trying to provide Carlisle folks some direction because I feel like with the efforts of, actually, most of the people that are on this call, that we've been able to keep Carlisle folks safe and Carlisle folks are able to keep themselves safe. And I'm reluctant to always be, you know, and anytime we meet with this group, we'll obviously be behind what the governor says. So to provide people notice, I thought, was the right thing to do. It wasn't just me, actually, it was the committee. I'm speaking for the committee, of course.
Yeah.
But I think that's the right way. And the other, the other big piece of that is that we're going to spend some time talking about, number one, this caucus, the votes. And importantly, we have a lot of planning, a lot of work to do around Town Hall and town functions to ensure that our residents can get what they need as efficiently and as safely as possible. First, with the safety of our residents in mind. And second, with the safety of our town employees in mind. Or actually, they're a parallel track. Not that one's more... Or actually, they're, they're, they're a parallel track. They're not, not that one's more important than the other. But I thought that, we thought that, we'll stay with the, you know, the, the June 1 date for that, but we're going to get back to residents early, beginning next Tuesday, with our planning about how to get our town government streamlined for, for lack of a better word, for stealing somebody else's line, the new normal for the foreseeable future. Does that make sense, Kate? Is that what you were looking for?
Yes, thank you. Nathan, does it make sense to you?
Yeah, yeah, it does. So, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
And to be clear, that, that this was, the discussion was about events and not town government and the rest of it. But this is, you know, council on aging, REITCOM, people planning events, that basically, if you want to plan, and it takes time to plan, that, that planning for an event in, in this month and, and May is not going to work out very well.
And so is that going to be clear, like, you know, when this is reported on, when we post it, things like that? Is it going to be clear as to, we've extended to June 1, but for these things?
My question is, I think we, when we first discussed this, we didn't have the governor coming out and saying May 18. So for that sign that goes on the roundabout, do we say town hall goes closed to June 1? Or are we saying town hall is closed till May 18? Or are we not saying anything?
This is Alan. I, I think we probably shouldn't say anything about that, where the, the town hall planning committee is meeting tomorrow, or Thursday, I guess, to talk about how we might open town hall on a limited basis so that we can serve the needs of the townspeople to get some stuff done while maintaining safety for both the residents and the people who have to get into town hall to review documents and that sort of thing. So there's a, there's a group meeting Thursday to discuss that. So that, in that, when, when that plan is in place, it can be implemented. Regardless of when that date is, the, the June 1 date is not meant to apply to things like that. It's meant to apply to large group meetings, to recreation facilities and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Alan.
Any other questions from the board? Do we want to?
I just have a quick one. Sorry, Kate. So was, was Governor Baker's order just an extension of the current stay-at-home order, or was it a modification of that? I'm sorry, I haven't seen it.
That's okay. I believe it was just an extension of that order.
Yeah, I did see, I did see the presentation. It was just, it's, it's an extension of the, of the May 4 order.
So why, why would we consider opening town hall earlier than the 18th if Governor Baker is saying everybody should stay home until May 4?
Because we think we may be able to do it safely and, and get some business done. If we can't, well, again, the, the committee hasn't met yet. They're going to meet on Thursday. And if it can be done, and we, and we think perhaps it can, then we can move that up a little bit. That's not a large group meeting. Those will be individuals, meeting with other individuals or, or, or just getting access to town hall facilities so that business can be carried out on a very limited basis.
Okay. And we'd be permitted to do that? We can, we can do something different than the governor has suggested?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the governor talked about groups of 10 people or less today, which is what it's been.
Yeah.
The actual alert says Governor Baker extends non-essential business closure until May 18. Stay-at-home advisory remains in effect. That's the actual alert from Boston, from the governor's office.
You could argue that some of these town functions are not non-essential.
That's just, I just wanted.
I guess Tom's on. Can we just ask, ask him if, is this something, like, would this be considered essential? I just don't want to put people in harm's way if.
Tom Harrington, our?
Yep, I'm, yep.
Town council. Yes, thank you.
Okay. So Nathan, your question is, can we open town hall before the governor's May 18 extension of the stay-at-home order? That, that's, that's correct. I'm worried about any, yeah, yes. Can we do that? Yeah, legally, yes, we can. The town, town hall functions are considered essential functions and can, you, you can be operating even with the stay-at-home order, order in place. Okay, thank you.
And I think we leave it up to the, you know, we look to the advisory committee that Alan mentioned to guide us in, you know, what makes the most sense.
Right. And it may also not all open up, you know, boom, all at once. It might be phased, depending on what they find and how long it's going to take them to, to organize whatever, you know, they need to in order to make this work.
And making sure that we have enough protective stuff for everybody there.
Absolutely. That's exactly right. Right. All right. So do you have a sense of the committee of support for extending our May 4 closure date to June 1?
I'm supportive of that.
I'm, I'm supportive of that.
I'm supportive of that. Luke?
Yeah, I'm supportive.
All right. That is unanimous. So LEPC, do your thing. Okay.
Was that a sense of the board or was that a vote?
I believe that was, I don't think they need a vote. So I was, I was just intending to give them the sense. 7:15 was our deferral of property tax due date board discussion. And I guess I would like to have Kimberly Kane, our town treasurer and tax collector, tell us what this all means, what we can do, and what her recommendation is, please.
There are three options given to towns for, with, related with different property tax and extensions of not paying interest. The first one, it's, it's the decision of the, of the board, not the tax collector themselves. The, the option is you can extend the due date for taxes to June 1. That would mean the actual due date is June 1. Interest would start on June 2. There's also an option in there to extend applications for exemption and tax deferrals to June 1. Those were due April 1. And the third is to waive interest penalties in fees on any type of tax that you have. That could be real estate, motor vehicle. For other towns, it's water, sewer. That would be like an interest free or open interest time from whatever your due date is. So if you extend it to June 1, you would have then, if you voted the other option, you would not charge interest on whatever tax you chose till June 30. But on July 1, it would go back to the date of the due date. So then you would be on July 1, 31 days late. So it's a, one is an extension of the due date, no interest. The other, if you chose it, would be no interest until June 30. It's your option to exercise one, none, or all.
Okay. Kim, can you explain a little bit more about the exemptions and tax deferrals, exactly what those are?
Those would be with the assessor's office, exemptions for elderly, blind, any type tax deferral, if you qualify for it. Those exemption applications had to be into the assessor's office by April 1. That would extend that date on those.
It would extend the date for applying?
For applying, correct. The date has gone by now. If you chose to open it back up, you would extend that date.
So Kim.
And that's through the assessor's office.
Kim, those exemptions, I believe, were based on your 2018 income taxes?
Again, that's an assessor. I don't want to speak for the assessor's office on the qualifications. It's, that's, I understood, Marianne said something to that effect, that it was based on that. But I, the criteria is based by the board of selectmen, and I can't speak for them.
What are, what are the financial implications of our doing this?
The biggest one in the beginning was cash flow. I know a lot of towns that extended the due date to June 1 prior to April 14. They're waiting, the banks are waiting till right before June 1 to make the bank payments. We have about 2.6 million out in bank payments that I haven't received yet. It was my understanding that, which I told them on the 9th that we had not extended it. So I, this town of Carlisle should be getting the check before May 1. But that was the biggest issue, was cash flow. Extending it to June 1 would extend cash flow out to June 1 or June 30.
Right. So understanding there's a cash flow issue, what, what's the, what's the value of that cash flow issue to Carlisle specifically?
Depending on how big it is, would be towns going out to, for RANs, revenue anticipation notes.
But what about for Carlisle?
Carlisle cash flow right now looks really good if I get that 2.6 million dollars in. But cash flow does not seem to be a problem right now. If you push it to June 30, there will be another preliminary tax bill going out July 1 that will be due a month later, too. And I have not heard any extension on that.
And do you have any sense right now, Kim, of how many homeowners who don't pay their taxes as part of their mortgage payments, another just not coming from the bank, but it's coming from the taxpayer individually, are you able to look and see sort of where we are today on our?
Right now, we're doing well for today, that when I looked at it from last year, of course, I wasn't here last year. There's, there's still a certain, there's still a considerable amount out, but we have this whole week till May 1. So I have a, you know, so I can't really tell you who's in the pipeline or if they're going to wait till the very last day. It appears that it is, the collections are coming in fine. It doesn't appear that it's had any effect, you know, on it. I've had some people calling, asking about the extension, not necessarily because they're not wanting to know because they might fold that money for, you know, the next, the next month or so. I've had some that would like it extended. But it really hasn't, for the, the smaller amount, it, the taxes, the tax flow coming in is, has been right on with what I've seen in the past. And I actually went back, Jim Darratt asked me to go back to 2006, different scenario. But even from 2006, going back to what was budgeted and collected, there was really no impact on it at that point either. So Carlisle seems to be doing fine with paying the taxes for this, this quarter. And, and you have to remember, quarter, quarter 4, the tax bills were mailed just, you know, before, two days before April 1. So this happened, you know, like the third week, second, third week of March. So I think a lot of people had in place their escrows or their taxes to be paid because the bill was going out in two weeks. I see a bigger issue possibly for the August 1 payment, if there's going to be a problem with people being laid off or whatever, not paying their jobs, getting paid. I think that'll be the bigger issue. So it's whatever way you want to shift it.
So Tom, is there any, is there any possibility that if we were to extend it, that people have already paid could come back and say, hey, I already paid, I, I want it back?
No, that's not, the statute doesn't allow that.
I think the issue is brought up would be doing it now, and before the May 1, you extend it out. The issue would be if you didn't or did something with the interest and did that after I started collecting interest and fees. That would be an issue if you did it. But who's paid has paid.
And are these both things that we can do, or is it one or the other? So there's one, we defer tax collection until June 1. And the other one is?
No, you don't defer tax, you extend the due date. The due date is May 1. Your option is to extend the due date to June 1.
And what is the other one? And are they mutually exclusive?
They're all exclusive. Second option is, do you want to extend the application to the assessor's office for exemptions and tax deferrals? And the third would be to have like, which is almost extending the due date. The third is actually how it's worded is, any tax payment, again, could be motor vehicle, could be real estate, could be water, could be sewer, any due date of a tax that you choose, whichever you choose, that's after March 10. And you, I vote this option, there's no interest penalty and fees collected until June, till after June 30. So we have a motor vehicle bill that's going out May 14, due June 14. So would you want to include that in it, too, or not?
But all of them are done by the end of July?
They're, all of them would be due by the end of July. The interest gets in, you know, it, you know, and then again, you're giving them that month. But if they don't pay it, the interest is going to go back to June 1, where the extension is, you're, you know, if you pay it June 2, you're only paying a day's interest. So that extends out with not paying, you, you're not liable for that time period at all. Where the other one is, if you pay in this window, you don't pay taxes and penalties. But it could, could push all those payments out to June 30. It's, it's whatever choice you want. Right now, it says May 1, and if you send it out, I'll bring the file down off the, off the Unipay and put it to another date.
So Tom, thanks for coming. And this will be my last question. Is there anything that we're not, that, that we need to be considering and thinking about this?
I don't think so. I think Kim's done a really good job explaining it. I just maybe add a few details. So it's, so it, it is two different votes, and I'm just going to focus on extending the due date of property taxes, which is May 1, and you can extend it up to June 1. You could choose a date in between May 1 and June 1, if you would like. I don't know how much sense that makes. The second, the second one is, you're, what you're doing is you are waiving interest and penalties on, and it goes beyond tax, it's on any excise, tax, betterment assessment or a portment there of water rate or annual sewer rate, which I know don't apply in Carlisle. And so the fine tuning I do on that one is that you, it needs to be due. You can choose the due date, but it needs to be before June 30. So I would say if you want to put it out, you would choose June 29 as the date, not June 30. But other than that, I think Kimberly's explained it exactly right.
We would only be waiving it for those taxes that were due now, not if they already owe anything from the past.
So the, the tax had to be due after March 10. Payment had to be due after March 10.
Okay. So we're not getting ourselves into trouble with previous ones?
No, if you, if you have a February, well, I just have to be just one, if you have a February delinquent payment, you're, you're not absorbed from that interest on that. Or if you, and, and I believe you have to specify what tax you want. It's not just a blanket. So you could do real estate and not motor vehicle if you wanted, or you could do whichever ones.
Yeah, I agree. You, you can pick and choose.
You can pick and choose. So you could say real estate and personal property, just real estate, not personal property, not motor vehicle. Our other motor vehicle bill, which is, is late now, with people paying interest, that was due May, March 5. So the only one that it would affect if you extended it out would be the rest of the real estate bill, personal property, which is, which there's not as many, but you could do it on that, too. And we have a motor vehicle excise going out, like I said, on May 14. And you could include that or not include that. I'm not sure I would, you know, include that, but.
But I thought, I thought that if we did this, it would be anything that was due after May 1, so therefore it would include that first motor vehicle one.
No.
Not if we don't specify it, you're saying?
No. It's any, you can do it on any bill that had a due date after March 10. You choose which ones.
Oh, it was March 10, not March 1. Which is why the March 1 doesn't work. Okay.
We've lost your sound.
Mine?
I can hear.
I can hear.
You may have to get out and come back in.
Alan, we can hear. Alan, can you hear me? This is Barney.
I think it's him.
Yeah. I'll send him a chat if he responds.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for letting me manipulate this.
Actually, Nathan, I've been spending the entire work weekend trying to wrap my mind around. So, you know, ask away, I'm still feeling. So, you know, ask away, I'm still feeling a little on the confused side, because I, I personally do not see the point of extending the due date to June 1st. I don't know how that helps anyone. If anything, you know, if anybody really is struggling, I think I would rather, you know, waive the interest and do it in that way, but, you know, and I'm, I'm hoping that we won't be like the SBA, and have, you know, these big corporations getting the $20 million, and the people that, that need the help don't get it, so to speak, because they may not know about the program. My other worry is, how do we notify everybody in time? You know, so that people who might be struggling to get it paid May 1st and pay May 1st, and then they don't know the program, so...
Yeah, I, I totally get that. I think getting, getting the information out as, as quickly as possible is really, really important. I realize that it's only until June 1st, but I think that that's a limitation of what we're allowed to do in the future. Maybe we'll be able to push it out even further. But I guess if it really doesn't have an impact on us, because we have the cash flow, and we will be collecting later, I think it's kind of an optics thing of, you know, we've got, we've got our citizens' backs, and I would be supportive of doing both of them, you know, and getting the message out as, as soon as possible. It's not gonna impact us, you know...
I wouldn't say it totally not impact you. I can, right now, your cash flow looks good, and if I had to, I'd go out with a RAN. I can't tell you if everybody waits till June 29th to pay, and it goes in that July 1st, and you have it, what, you know, funds are available.
Right, but, but we can get through it.
Losing, yeah.
We could get, we could get through it if that happened, right? I mean, I don't think a lot of people are gonna take advantage of it, but I think that those people who do, I think it's important that we, we offer it to them. I guess I would say we do it, we do it because it's our community.
Okay, but I just want to clarify, you said both, and there were three programs, so I want to know which both. Are you talking about both the extending the debt, the date to June 1st, and waiving the fees to June 29th? Because it seems to me, just wave...
I may have meant to say all three.
Okay, all right. Because it seems to me, saying that we will waive the fees till June 29th does both, and because it effectively extends the deadline, anyway, so I don't see...
Except, except now that person feels like they're actually late in paying, right? I mean, it's, you know, they're default, if they're default, we can prevent that from happening.
Okay, all right. But, but just, just so you know, they'll still be, then psychologically, then they'll still be in default after June 1st, but they won't have to pay anything until, if they pay their bill by June 29th.
Right. And it just gives people some time. Somebody may be, right, trying to collect unemployment, same, somebody may be, you know, hoping their company comes through with employee payment, I forgot what the acronym is, but anyway, I, I, I agree with Nathan, I think it's, it's a small thing that we can do to help some folks in town that are struggling, and that it's important that we try to assist them, given that it's not, the, the town can manage it financially.
I see Victor's iPad here, so the Chair of the FinCom, and I know they spent...
They had a statement.
Bit of time discussing this same issue last night, and they had a statement, so I want to give Victor an opportunity to speak here. Do you see him, Tim? Can you unmute him?
I do. I will mute him. He's unmuted.
All right. Great. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
All right. So our, our, our statement was fairly, fairly simple. We had a fairly lengthy discussion, and ultimately, it is the Board of Selectmen's, you know, purview. From a FinCom perspective, given what we heard from, from Kim last night, as well in our discussions as to the benefit and the individuals who potentially may have already filed, but maybe would, wouldn't be able to take advantage of this, we actually have the position that we do not support the postponement of Q4 FY '20 from May 1st to June 1st. And it was just a simple statement that, that we made, but certainly happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Victor, this is Barney, and tell me, what, what's your thinking again? Is it that because it's not fair to people that might have wanted to take advantage of it, but have already paid their tax bill?
Yes, I think that was one of the, one of the key aspects of it. The other aspect of while cash flow is, is good, I think this is part of the conversation that we had from a FinCom perspective, starting back at the beginning of April, is that this time is a time that we need to be very cautious about, you know, revenues and also expenses on the other side. So that was kind of the nuts and bolts of the conversation last night, in terms of, one, the fairness factor, one is that the benefit factor is fairly limited, balanced against essentially, while we have good cash flow, it will, it will impact our cash flow. So I think that aspect of making sure that we shore up and manage our expenses in that way, both from the expense and revenue side, was really the, the nature of our, the, the nature of why we actually came up with that particular position and statement.
I guess I, I still feel the same way. I think that this is about our community and our people, and I understand that the timing is not perfect, and that some people may not be able to benefit from it, and, you know, as well as others. But I, you know, I think, you know, it's like companies and towns are grappling with this, you know, all over the place, and, and, you know, we need to, we need to try to help our citizens.
Yeah, I was initially not supportive of it, but I, listening to the discussions this evening, the, the fact that our cash flow is good, well, we are requesting the town to limit or cease all discretionary spending, that will get us some relief, at least in terms of the cash flow issue. And it is discretionary. I think because of the, the problems that are constantly being reported, and people getting relief from even the existing programs, in terms of the PPP program and small business loan program, that this may give people some temporary relief, and if it's not going to be significant in terms of the cash position of the town, I think I am in favor of it.
Yeah, and I, I just want to echo that as well. Yeah, I'm in favor of this, and, and, you know, like Nathan said earlier, I honestly think, you know, it's Carlisle, the people who are gonna use it are the people who actually need it. I, I, I don't see folks just taking advantage, I mean, maybe you'll get a few, but in the grand scheme of things, I, I, that's just not how Carlisle is. So it, yeah, you know, and I, I, I get the cash flow piece, you know, but I, I think it's really gonna be people who just really genuinely need it, and, and to give some folks a little bit of breathing, just, you know, you know, until that relief check comes in, until something else maybe pops. And if it doesn't, then, you know, you know, we cut the bridge at, at June 30th, but, or they do, but, you know, I, I think we do what we can to, to help folks out.
Thank you, Luke. Barney, did you want to add anything, or shall we?
No, I'm still, you know, I'm still, I, I really appreciate the role that the FinCom is playing in terms of, you know, making us think this through, and that's helpful. But I'm still, I still believe that we should do this as well.
Right.
For all the reasons others have mentioned, so...
Would love to have a, a motion, please.
Are we, just a quick question, are we moving?
I think you should vote each one individually, Tom might weigh in on this.
Tom agrees, do each one individually.
Each, each option exercised separately, if you're ready, then I'm clear on it, and...
All right. So I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the extension of the due date for property taxes, for real estate taxes, I guess is the correct phrase, right?
Well, real estate and personal property.
Yeah, it's, property is the correct phrase.
Property, okay. Extend the due date for property taxes to being due on June 1st, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? This is gonna be a roll call, so Barney Arnold?
Arnold, aye.
Luca Ascolillo?
Ascolillo, aye.
Nathan Brown?
Brown, aye.
Louis?
Louis, aye.
And Kate Reed, aye. So that was unanimous. And I need a second to defer penalties and interest charges on, until June 29th, on, on payments made before June 29th.
Is it on or before? It's better to say, I think, on or before than to...
On or before.
And then specify what tax you want. Is it real estate only? Is it real estate and motor vehicle?
I think all taxes.
All taxes?
But is it, do we have to say after May 10th, Tom?
No, that's part of the...
No, 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 that's...
That's part of the, the, the option, if you read the option. It's any, so whatever you say, if you say real estate, motive, whatever, whatever, whatever one you pick, it's, if, with a due date after March 10th.
Okay.
So I could have interest on the ones that were due March 5th, but the ones that are due June 14th won't for the extra two weeks.
Okay. So somebody want to give me that motion?
How about I give it a crack? So I guess, so you're, we're looking for someone to move that the board waived payment of interest and other penalties as it applies to excise and other taxes up to, or to be paid on or before June 29th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion of that, our motion? Seeing none, I will do a roll call, Barney Arnold?
Arnold, aye.
Luca Ascolillo?
Ascolillo, aye.
Nathan Brown?
Brown, aye.
Alan Lewis?
Lewis, aye.
And Kate Reed, aye. Thank you. I hope that this does get some relief to...
I would suggest, originally, the vote was that you had to notify each taxpayer, which thankfully, they changed by paper and notice. Thankfully, they changed that cost wise and paper and all that. So it has to go up on the website, so I guess, Tim, forget, Jen, or somebody, and hopefully, the bank still pays their 2.3 before.
If we have somebody from...
Yeah, Mary Lynn Bone, I believe, is on the line for the mosquito.
So please, be sure.
Unmute her, Tim, just so we could ask her about whether this might be a blast that could go out.
Is it a minute?
One more to go.
There's a motion yet.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I thought there were three.
There are.
About the exemptions and tax deferrals.
I would do the exemption in case, I think I did hear from Mary, and there was one person that missed an exemption on deadline. I don't know about the tax deferrals, like I said, but if you're gonna do the other two, and there's somebody that didn't do their option, I, I would just, I would see why I wouldn't be prudent not to do it.
Right, okay, sorry.
Tom, can you take a crack?
Actually, I'd look to Kim to take a crack at this one, I think she understands it. I just prepared for the first two.
Move, as if somebody would move the motion to extend the application deadline for exemption and tax deferrals.
So moved.
That was moved by Alan. And Nathan, you seconded it?
I did.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, Barney Arnold?
Arnold, aye.
Ascolillo, aye.
Brown, aye.
Louis, aye.
Kate Reed, aye. Okay, there's our three. And then if we have the mosquito...
Yeah, so Mary Lynn, not to put you on the spot here, but is it possible, do you think, to have the mosquito send a blast out? I don't know if it could happen tonight, but at least first thing tomorrow?
I can send the notes to Betsy as soon as we're done with the meeting, and hopefully she can get it out tonight if she's available. If not, I'm sure she'll do it first thing in the morning.
Yeah, great, thanks, Mary Lynn. Do you have the text you need?
Um, I probably will come back and get the exact text afterwards, I've got notes, I've actually been recording this, just to try to get the details.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, everybody, for agreeing, for putting this on the agenda again, I really appreciate it. Sorry I missed the last meeting.
Well, it was a different discussion before, that's, we were in a, we had, we're in a different, the, the information's changed since then, we didn't have the information about how many people paid or not paid, you know, there was a lot of, we never took a vote to, to do it or not to do it, we just more or less...
You didn't, you didn't vote not to do it, you just didn't vote to do it. And in the sense of that is, the banks would pay with whatever due date you went, so instead of automatically pushing it out, we've, we've got a good amount coming in. But you did not vote it, you just chose to exercise the option. There's some towns reviewing it now.
And I also think it was very helpful, Kim, for the, to send us the Mass General Law stuff on this, it made decision-making much, much easier.
Just, yeah, I want you to be well informed in whatever decision that you make.
It was very helpful.
You're very welcome.
Good. Now, we have the Audit Committee, who has been patiently waiting, and I apologize to them. And who do we have here for that presentation, Tim?
Kevin Perkins is the Chair of the Audit Committee, and then we've got our, our auditor here as well. I think all the members of the Audit Committee are here, Mike Bishop and Taylor Benjamin, but Kevin, are you gonna lead off the discussion?
Yes. I'll excuse myself now, bye-bye, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Hi, Tom.
Yeah, so from an Audit Committee perspective, first, I wanted to just thank Kimberly and Priscilla for getting us through another successful financial closing for 2019. So the Audit Committee has met and reviewed and accepted the 2019 year-end financial statements and a management letter. And so I wanted, we're, we're in good shape, but I wanted to just introduce Matt Hunt, who is from the, our audit firm, CLA, to do a, a quick summary of the 2019 statements.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin, and thank you to everybody for inviting me to the meeting tonight. So I do, I know that you guys have a busy agenda, there's been a lot discussed at this meeting, and, you know, I'm smart enough to know, even though this is my profession, I'm smart enough to know that audits are the most exciting topic. So, so I will keep this to a brief summary, but I also know that it's important to, especially in light of everything that's going on, it's good to know where you, where you're at in terms of your financial condition, even though these are from several months ago, it is good to get a snapshot of where you were back on June 30, 19, and where you're going. So I do, I will give a brief summary of the financial reports and open it up to questions. I know you've had a chance to, to get copies of the, of the reports in advance. So first things first, we'll talk about the financial statements and the management letter. So getting right into it, the financial statements, really the most important part of the financial statements, and one of the most important parts is our opinion. So on pages one and two is our opinion, and our opinion on the financial statements, as has been the case for the past several years, is an unmodified opinion, so it's the best opinion that you can get. In an audited financial statement, it basically is saying that these financial statements are being presented properly in accordance with accounting standards. So getting into some of the numbers, really want to focus on the general fund, and in particular, fund balance is a really important number, as, as we all know. So really, fund balance is made up of various components, if you look at your balance sheet, you'll see that fund balance is made up of various different types of categories, but I really want to jump into the, to what is called the unassigned fund balance. Your unassigned fund balance number at June 30, 19 was a little under $4 million. And with that number, slightly lower than the previous year, about $30,000 lower, fairly level. And that number does include your stabilization fund balance as well. And what we like to do with this number, and you'll see it in your management discussion and analysis piece of your financial statements, you've got a really nice trend table on page eight, if anybody wants to look at that, if they're ever looking for something fun to do. You can look at your trend table and see your general fund, fund balance over the past five years. But it is actually good information to see that number, because it's a number that your bond rating agencies look at, and it's good to know that number. It's a, it's a number that we look at where we compare that unassigned fund balance to your overall revenues. And the reason why that number's important is, it kind of is fitting, you know, today with everything that's going on, you know, your revenues might take a hit here with, with everything that's going on with COVID-19. So you look at that number, a fund balance, you compare it to your revenues, it sort of gives you an idea of, okay, well, if revenues drop a little bit, do I have enough in fund balance to sort of take a little bit of a revenue hit? So if you look at that, that number, that unassigned fund balance number, 3.9 million, you compare it to your revenues, that ratio is a little under 12%. So if you... So if you look at the past couple of years, that ratio has been going down a little bit over the years, but there's a reason for that. The town strategically has been using a little bit of free cash uh over the past couple of years. You've also done some bonding for some capital projects, et cetera. That 12% number is a very good number. Okay? So overall, compared to other municipalities, that 12% number is a really good number. So when you consider the fact that you might take a hit on your revenues a little bit, you know, moving forward with everything that's going on, you have a good fund balance number to help absorb a revenue hit if you do take that. So that's really a key highlight with the general fund. Also, I'd like to point out with the general fund, your budget to actual statement, I think is also a really good statement to look at. That's on pages 55 and 56, if anybody has their reports in front of them, which I know you do. Of course you do. So if you look at that budget to actual financial statement, you'll see that, I think it really gives you a great idea as to how the general fund performed during the year. And overall, the fund balance uh did well during FY19. Overall, fund balance went up above $530,000. So if you look at that uh budget to actual financial statement, what you'll see is in the column that says final budget. If you look towards the bottom, it says net change in fund balance. That net change in fund balance number, to me, is a, is a good row to look at because if you look at your final budget column and you look at that row that says net change in fund balance, it's about negative 1.1 million. What that tells you is, is that going into the year, as is the case with all municipalities, the town had budgeted $1.1 million of reserves to fund its budget, be it prior year encumbrances, free cash, overlay surplus, et cetera. Every municipality does not have equal revenues to expenses. You're always going to budget some of your, your budget with with reserve funds. But your overall general fund went up during the year despite that, because if you look at the next page of your budget tax or the second page, you look at the very last column, it's a variance column, and it shows that your revenues came in about $240,000 higher than expected. And your expenditures were about $1.2 million less than expected. So because of those two positive factors, your general fund actually increased during the year. So again, that's another good statement to look at. If you don't want to read an entire financial statement, I don't blame you. So that's a really good statement, too. That's a nice go-to if you wanted to take a look at how your general fund did during the... Couple other highlights of the financial statements. OPEB is obviously a topic uh that I know, I think it's pretty fitting. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's part of your agenda tonight uh is that you're, you're taking some votes or taking some action related to your OPEB trust fund or the establishment of an OPEB trust fund. So let's take a look at some of your OPEB numbers. Uh, you'll see that on your balance sheet on page 12. You'll see the liability. It's a little over $15 million. Uh, but also your footnote gives a lot of good information, too, starting on page 42. There's about a three-page footnote on OPEB. So as a level of measure of comparison, your OPEB liability is about $15 million. Compared to last year is about $13 million. So really, the reason, key reason for that increase is that every single year, you have to have an actuarial valuation done of your OPEB liability. And so every year, the discount rate that is used to measure that liability, it has to change every single year. And right now, the town's OPEB set aside money is not in an irrevocable trust. It soon will be. But it's not in an irrevocable trust. So the way that the OPEB uh liability is measured is that the discount rate is based on a 20-year municipal bond rate. The 20-year municipal bond rate as of June 30, 19 was much lower than the year before. So because that discount rate was much lower, your liability went up. So it's really just an accounting treatment of the liability. It's not because you have a bunch of new retirees or things of that nature. It's really more that discount rate changed from the previous year. And then your footnote gives you some other good information in terms of the sensitivity of your liability, if the discount rate went up 1% or down 1%. And other various good information as well. Another piece of information to point out is your pension liability. That's also another big liability that's on your financial statements. Now, that liability is basically your portion, the town's portion of your Middlesex County uh retirement system liability. Similar to OPEB, you know, the Middlesex County retirement pension system has an overall liability. And so the town's portion of that liability goes on your financial statements. So that liability for uh June 30, 19 was 11.2 million. That's about a little under a $2 million increase from the previous year. The primary cause to that is that the investment markets for December 34th, the year ended December 31st, 2018, which is what your liability is measured at for these financial statements, was a really bad year. So obviously, the investment markets this year are going to be really bad, too. But 12, 31, 18 was not a great year for the investment markets either, so that sort of jacked up your liability as well. Uh, but the thing about this liability is that once your Middlesex County retirement system is fully funded, that liability, this pension liability, is going to go away. So those are really some of the key highlights. Again, you know, it's a pretty large financial statement, but really, I feel like those are really the key numbers uh within the financial statements that I've wanted to highlight. So before I go on to the financial statements, uh, does any, excuse me, the manager letter, does anybody have any specific questions uh about the financial statements? Okay?
Doesn't look like it.
What's that?
I said it doesn't look like there's any...
Doesn't look like it, then there you go. Uh, all right. So we'll move on to the manager letter. And so with your management letter, uh, there's a couple of comments uh related to to some various uh areas for improvement that we'd like to point out, and then there's just a couple of informational comments as well. So getting right into it, uh, first comment in the manager letter relates to information technology. Uh, so what we did is we had, uh, we have a group within our firm uh that are IT specialists. So we put them in the, on the audit this year. It's not, it was not a full-blown information technology audit. Uh, their work was limited in scope as it relates to to the audit work that we do. Uh, and they came up with a, with various recommendations uh for improvement related to some areas uh for IT. So sort of going through it, uh, if you look at the comment, um, one of our recommendations is that there's some third-party reports uh for for third-party service providers that that the town uses. Uh, there's what we call SSAE 16 reports. Basically, they're, they're basically audit reports of your service providers to make sure that their controls are operating properly. There's also some comments in there about some testing uh that the town could be doing uh related to some, some of their IT systems, et cetera. You can read through the comment. I'm not going to sit there and go through each particular item. Really, at the end of the day, we had a good conversation, uh, myself, the Audit Committee, Tim, had a good conversation. We feel like the next step on this one uh is to actually set up a meeting between our IT specialists and town management to figure out what the next step would be uh to see if there's ways that we could help as a firm, help implement some of these recommendations, also get your IT third-party uh vendor involved in that. So we'll set that up uh with our IT specialists and set that up with Tim uh in management and sort of see where we want to go moving forward. Next comment relates to year-end close and financial reporting. So basically, cutting to the chase on this one, uh, and obviously, every year is very unique and different in terms of what circumstances go on uh in terms of what factors might come into play in terms of the completeness of your year-end close and financial reporting. Obviously, this year, you're going to have the COVID-19 challenges uh in terms of being able to close down the year. So really, with this comment, um, basically, I think really the crux of this comment is, is we wanted the town's finance team to sort of get together, especially with with Kim being brought on. This is really her first, you know, fiscal year where she's involved in the actual year-end process. Was basically just a comment, a recommendation for the finance team to get together and sort of work together to to identify the areas that sometimes can cause some timing delays uh with the year-end close, et cetera, and just to work on uh ways to 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 make that uh efficient, et cetera. But again, with COVID-19, that's a whole other set of challenges that we didn't expect when we wrote this, we wrote this comment. COVID-19 and all, and all that had not really come, come about. So, you know, this comment might have been a lot different if 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 the COVID-19 challenges had had come forth before we had written it. Uh, so we definitely take this within context. You know, when we look to see, you know, FY20 in the year-end close process, we really expect with all of our clients, not just the town of Carlisle, we expect with all of our clients that there are going to be some timing delays. You know, we we appreciate the fact that it's, it's created some challenges. I know the town uh has done a really good job of keeping things together and everything like that. So we're, we're going to be cognizant of that. So when it comes to to year-end close and financial reporting, we are going to be recognizing the fact that there's a lot of challenges this year. And then other comment, uh, that's not necessarily just an informational comment, relates to financial policies and procedures manuals. Really, this is a standard comment that we see with a lot of our clients, and it really is one of those things where in a perfect world, you know, really, for every financial transaction, every single financial process that you do, you would have a formal policy and procedure manual that identifies every single process that you go through, the step-by-step process, the controls that are in place, et cetera, and that's sort of the perfect world scenario. The town does have excellent controls in place, and the town does have several written policies and procedures for a lot of their transactions. What we say with all of our clients, this isn't just the town of Carlisle, is that we appreciate it's a resource issue. Really, with all of our clients that have similar manager letter comments, it really just comes down to oftentimes, it's hard for the people that are doing the day-to-day work, it's hard to find the time to put together these policies and procedures. So, so really, we appreciate that. It's not, it's very uh common uh municipalities to have this comment on there. And again, the town does have excellent controls. It does have a lot of written policy procedures. So this is really just a best, best practice comment uh to, as time permits, as resources permit, to continue to build on those policies and procedures.
I just want to interject here that um this town last June did start a committee, um, Priscilla's my witness, to do just that. We had one meeting, and then um I think you know what happened. So uh we got a little derailed. We we would like to start. There's a lot of support from the selectmen, I can tell you, to to get that done.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's one of those things where that's really, that is actually the best way to approach it, is if you started a committee. So you have a group of people that are, that are, it's on your mind, something that you're aware of, it's something that you'd like to do. And again, it's, it's one of those things where you gotta, you're gonna choose your battles, and you gotta choose where you're going to devote your energies and your resources to. And so, you know, as time permits, you know, you'll be able to build upon those things. And again, you know, it's not, it's not as if the town does not have good controls. It's the town has excellent controls in place. So that, that's the good news. As far as the informational comments, really, two of them relate to GASB statements, which just to give you guys some news on that, because I know everybody's really excited about GASB statements. The actual, the GASB statements that are out there, the, the, the buzz is, is that they're actually going to be extended for a year. So GASB 84 was going to be due for the FY20 audit. It wasn't really going to have much of an impact anyway. But GASB is really looking to extend the due dates on these things for a year because of all the COVID-19 challenges that have come about. And really, I don't see any reason why they're not going to do that. I think they're going to be doing, voting on that in May. So really, with these GASB statements, I think we're going to have a year's grace uh on these statements. But really, the informational comment to give a little bit of commentary on is the one about OPEB, and it does sort of tie in a little bit to what, to what the town's doing tonight in terms of voting about the, the OPEB trust. Really, all we want to inform you guys here is, is that uh, as you know, the town does not, at this time, have an irrevocable trust fund related to its OPEB fund. You've got some money set aside, but GASB says in order to recognize the financial benefits of it through your actuarial valuation to get that liability down, so you can have that higher discount rate, it does have to be an irrevocable trust. The town was waiting for some DOR guidance. The DOR did take quite a bit of time to get that guidance out. So that's the reason why it has taken some time here, but I know the town is, is moving in the, in the right direction. And you'll be, you'll have that irrevocable trust fund soon, and so you will be able to recognize those benefits. But this comment really is just pointing out the reasons why, at this current point in time, you're not, you don't see those benefits on your financial statements. That's really it in a nutshell in the manager letter.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. Matt, I've got one question for you. What does GASB stand for?
Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Okay.
Yeah, they set, they set the standards.
Got it.
They're our best friends.
I actually did read your report, and I, I was a little dismayed to see that last year, we, we had nine recommendations in IT and we got one done. So thank you for offering to help and kind of giving us a little kick, and um hopefully, we'll get more than one done next year for the IT stuff.
Also, in terms of, uh, I know in policies and procedures, we have lots of work to do, but the, but particularly for financial processes, are there, is there boilerplate? Are there, are there models that we would not have to completely reinvent the wheel to get a lot of this stuff done?
My understanding is that the Department of Revenue Division of Local Services does, I don't know if I'd call them boilerplate, but I do know that they offer assistance in this area. And I do know that there are probably some consultants out there that do have some, you know, boilerplate-type models that they could then build off of. You know, if they were to, you know, come into the town and sort of understand the town, everything. Now, I don't know, I don't know if that's something we, as your audit firm, could do.
Do.
From an independence perspective, I'd be, I'd have to look into that to see if that's something that we could do, but...
Yeah. I've gotten some from other towns, and I have some with me that I brought from Egger Town. And talking to other towns, it would be similar to yours. You get theirs, and then you can refine from that a lot.
Is there a town, you know, if it was a town whose auditor said, "This is the finest thing we've ever seen," you know, like us?
Last year, last year, we were starting with the Littleton one, but I think we want to throw that one out because obviously, they didn't have very good control.
And this, this is actually a good time to write them or change them because you're in an event that you would really want financial policies. So it might help to model where you're, you know, where you're at or where you want to, you know, go with that, so.
Yeah, we do, we do actually have a template that the Department of Revenue did for the town, and it it might be four years ago, four or five years ago by now. So we do have kind of the, the bare bones of of what policies at least should be, uh, you know, a town should have. And we do have, you know, the verbiage, so to speak. They'd have to be, you know, tailored to Carlisle specifically, but it's, uh, it's not as if we have nothing uh in place. We've, we've got something we can work with.
It's another time-consuming project.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions about the...
I, I just think we would be remiss if we did not recognize the work that went into keeping us our head above water for the last couple of years. You know, Priscilla and Kim and and others in Town Hall have done just an amazing job, well above the Call of Duty, to uh make sure that the town is in good financial shape. And we do, I want, I want the Board of Selectmen to acknowledge that uh they, they, we owe them all a big debt of gratitude.
Here, here. Thank you all so much.
I agree.
Any other questions for the auditor? Okay, um. Can we uh maybe just jump to the OPEB trust while we're on this sort of...
That'd be great.
Get it done.
Do, do we need a motion to accept the audit?
We do.
Yes.
Okay, right.
I would move that uh the audit for fiscal year 19 uh be accepted.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Arnold, I.
Ascalillo, I.
Brown, I.
Louis, I.
Reed, I. Good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
You, too.
Finalize, uh, the town declaration of the OPEB trust. Kim, do you want to explain? Do you think you need to explain a lot, or do...
Basically, when I stepped on, this is the last piece that you need, that you really need, and is, um, the, the big thing is, is to have it recognized on your financials. It will probably bring that 15 million down to like 11 million. Of course, this wasn't the best financial year. But it's, it's important for the discount rate and that to um get that liability down and have this recognized as a trust. And until it is a trust, it's not recognized on your financials. So when I stepped on, that was the last piece. There was a little bit of change in guidance that came out that we were waiting for in, in March to come out with. Some towns had to re-vote things. So you're all set in all your votes of accepting it and what you've done. This was the final, um, you know, piece of it. After you adopt it, we'll record it with the um town clerk. And it um has to be on for 90 days before it's actually um adopted. Uh, so the financials may not totally reflect it for next fiscal year because the 90 days will be after June 30th. My goal was to have it before, but like I said, there was final guidance from uh DOR we were waiting for, and then we had to have town council refine it for our own. So it's all set, approved. We'll file it with the town clerk, 90 days, it's adopted. I'll send a copy over. I'll send a copy over to Bartholomew, our financial advisors. I'll give it to the auditors, I'll give it to Parker, our actuarial person. And what I'm going to have him do for next year, because it might not be recognized due to the, just the timeframe, is have him give us a comparison of what it would be if it was actually on our financials. And then from then on, it will be part of it, we'll get a higher discount rate, and we'll be able to have our financials have it recognized.
Is there a motion to?
I move that the town formally establish an OPEB trust.
Second. I would like you to say an irrevocable trust, because...
Irrevocable trust, yes.
Can't be used for anything but OPEB.
Right.
Second.
That's the key.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, a la, aye.
Nathan? Okay.
Nathan's muted.
My unmuting wasn't working, Brown, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye. I was going to come back to you, Nathan. I could see you kind of pushing. Great. So we are at our public safety communications. Was there anything else from us, Kimberly?
No, I think I'm good to...
There you go.
Don't need you anymore.
Communications, working great information about the new...
Thank you, Priscilla.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could suggest that we take an item out of order here. I know that the moderator is on the call, and he...
I see him.
Has a matter to address with the board, and I can do number four very quickly.
Okay, I'm sure, okay, if there were people for number four, okay.
There are not, no.
So let's skip number four and go to number five, town moderator. Welcome, town moderator.
He was there.
He's there, he's muted.
Is he?
Yep.
Trying to unmute him.
There he goes.
All right, now you're welcome. No, we still don't hear him.
Tells me he's not muted.
Wayne, we can't hear you. We can't hear you, no.
It looks like I'm unmuted, I don't...
Oh, you are now.
There you are, now we can hear you.
Then we had that problem last week.
I guess it's a time delay.
I don't know, I'm doing Zoom calls all day, and only with you do I have this problem. Oh, well. Anyway, thank you. What I was saying is that if you did need to take up the other matter, I can wait.
No, no, we're good.
Okay, is it possible for me to do a screen share? Do you?
Yes, oh, if Tim allows it.
I've got to figure out how to allow it. As a security measure, I was instructed to turn off the screen sharing, so... I've got to be, I've got to be able to turn it back on.
While he's figuring that out, Wayne.
Tim, just real quickly.
My husband was on a meeting last week, weekend, actually, and they had voting. So when they had voting on a thing, they had a little pop-up ballot that got up there, and then within two seconds, they could tell how many votes there were, and, you know, various security things. So it was quite an interesting process to watch.
Yes.
I think Nathan was trying to suggest to him how you could do that.
I just, I just chatted with you, Kim.
Oh, okay.
All right. All right, let's see. All right, I'm looking for the box, but I can't.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I will get started. Actually, I think Tim had circulated to an email that I had written last week, and I'm slightly modified, but basically the same concepts. I had just summarized it with a couple of PowerPoint slides, thinking that if there were members of the public, it'd be a little bit easier for them to follow. So what I plan to do is to form an advisory committee to help me figure out how to do town meeting. And so I wanted to explain what I'm doing, why, and what help I need from, from the town generally, Board of Selectmen, FinCom, the administrator, the clerk, et cetera, and also to solicit some help from the public, because we will, we will need that. So let me start with a sort of a baseline of what I would call some planning assumptions. So number one, the annual town meeting will occur. If it doesn't occur on June 23rd, which is the currently scheduled date, then it will happen at some point later this year, hopefully this summer. That's assumption number one. So we have to keep planning. It's not a prediction that we will or won't have it on June 23rd. It's just we need to plan prudently. Second, I'm assuming that whenever we have it, whether it's June or indeed talking about the special town meeting that you have already decided you probably will want to hold in the fall, whenever we have it, some sort of social distancing will be required. We have some idea of what that looks like now. I'm sure that we will learn more as the state gives us additional guidance. And then the third planning assumption is that it's not going to be up to me solely or to this group to decide when town meeting will occur. That decision actually is either going to be made by the governor in, you know, the various general regulations applying to meetings of all types, or it will be up to the Board of Selectmen acting under the statutory authority it has. Or if something should happen at the last minute, I have some statutory authority as town moderator to delay a town meeting. So, so the question of whether, of when the meeting will occur is not going to be on the scope for, for this committee. So what our mission will be is to advise me, as the town moderator, how to conduct the town meeting safely while maximizing the opportunity for citizen participation, which I take it is, was this tenor of Kate's remarks about the types of meetings that can occur. So, so prong one of the mission is to provide that advice, and prong two is to help marshal the resources needed to actually pull off such a meeting, because it is more resource-intensive to do so, to do it, however we may choose to do it differently than we've done it in the past. So I will need help, not necessarily financial help, fortunately, but we will need some smart labor. The folks that I'm inviting to join, join on this, and many of them have already said yes, include the police chief, the fire chief, the town administrator, the town clerk. I'd appreciate if someone from the Board of Selectmen would, if you would designate or someone would volunteer to join. FinCom, Victor has already indicated that he or another member will participate. Council on Aging, that's an important segment of the population and has some specific concerns, so I want to make sure we have good representation there. Obviously, Board of Health or the health agent. I'd like to have two people from the Carlisle Public Schools, Scott Hefner to assist with IT, and somebody who can help with facilities, that may be Rob Furtado, or superintendent may also join the group. And then the group where I need the public's help is I'd like to find at least five citizen volunteers who are, have one of two qualifications or preferably both. It's actually that they're tech-savvy and that they're either knowledgeable or thoughtful around town meeting procedure. And the reason for that, as I'll explain in a minute, is that whatever solutions we go to are likely going to use laptops and Zoom calls and so forth. But we can't leave people to fend for themselves. We need to have, we need to have a system figured out, need to test it, do dry runs and so forth. And we need to have people around who can, who can support the activities. So, so I, since figuring out how to do things, there's a lot of expertise in this town. I thought it would be really helpful to have a group like that. And in talking with people in other towns and in other venues who have experimented with, with large meetings, having a group of people who can help you sort of game out what it will look like in advance is really crucial. So that's kind of a large group. I would probably just meet with everyone at the beginning to sort of get everyone situated and kind of divide up the work. And then I don't know if we'd ever necessarily meet as a whole again, but would get people to work on specific things and come back with advice on specific issues. The ideas for how to hold town meeting, there's sort of two, two basic possibilities that I'd like to look at with the group's help. One is doing it outdoors. There's actually a lot of discussion around the Commonwealth about, about how to do that on a playing field, in a parking lot, with PA systems. There's some discussion about having people...